Welcome to the February Working Session of the City Planning Commission. This is a new format for us and, I think, in my time on Planning Commission, the largest attendance that we have had for a working session ever. Before we dive into the agenda, Mr. Leonard is kind of going to walk us through the housekeeping for today's format. And I also want to point people out that the agenda has slightly changed. We, after kind of the housekeeping, there'll be an opportunity for public comment about something that's not listed. And then, as you'll see when we go over the format, there's, we want to hear comments about each of the items that we're addressing as those things come up. And so we'll sprinkle the additional opportunity for hearing comments throughout the agenda. We will not have an open mic effectively at the end of the agenda. So just note that now. Mr. Leonard, do you want to walk us through some housekeeping?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that. Thank you all for joining us this evening. This is, as Chair Mills indicated, sort of a new structure that we wanted to essentially provide a clear opportunity for on these two proposed zoning ordinance updates, a open opportunity for comment and feedback. Generally, we're going to go through, as indicated, we're going to provide a general audience participation opportunity if you'd like to address the Planning Commission on anything other than the items on the agenda. Then for each topic, we're going to go through a couple of components of them. That is first, a brief presentation on the topic. Then we'd really like to focus initially after that on any questions or clarifications that would be helpful to you to understand. And then we're going to open up comments and feedback. To the extent possible, we would welcome you to use the Q and A function for both your comments and questions. That will, all of those comments will be recorded and memorialized as part of this webinar, as is the video presentation itself. So this is being recorded and it will be available in the future for your viewing. Before we get started, I want to, I want to start off with a quick poll, though, to get a sense of what you're here for. So I'd like you to, if you could, you should have the ability now to address which topic you are interested in, whether it's primarily accessory dwelling units, the transit zoning, or you're interested in both. And this is, this is not written in stone. This is just giving us a sense of overall allocation of time over the course of the evening to topics. And I'm gonna, looks like almost everybody has filled it out. And we'll end it. So it looks like the majority of folks are interested in both topics. So with that, we're going to do our best. These are obviously big topics, and we're going to do our best to stay on track. We've generally got a couple hours scheduled this evening. Remember, this is not your, this is not your only opportunity for feedback on these items. This is your A opportunity. You can always contact us at the city to provide and share other other questions or comments that you have. Likewise, if there's anything that we don't, if there's anything that we don't get to, that we can't address specifically, please note that we're going to be taking all that information down and posting them on our city, on the city's website. We have project pages for both of these topics. So just a quick technology overview. I'm not going to spend too much time on this because I feel like collectively we all live in Zoom and similar platforms. But quickly, if during the process, you would like to raise your hand for either a question to be recognized for a question or during the comment period, you can raise your hand on your computer. Under the, again, I think the Q and A is a great resource. So any feedback or questions that you have, we encourage you to use that to the greatest extent possible so we can memorialize all those and get as much feedback at the time allotted as possible. If you are on a phone and you're not viewing this through a web link, you can also during the appropriate comment period to press star nine. That has the effect of digitally raising your hand, and we will recognize you then by the last three numbers of your phone for comments. I will try to give any sort of audio comments about a two-minute warning today. We'd really just like to get through as many comments and feedback as we can. So I would just ask to you to keep your comments and questions as succinct as possible so we can hear from your neighbors as well. We already covered the polls. So just a couple of quick meeting norms. We're going to do our best to stick to the schedule and the topics at hand. As I mentioned, please raise your hand to be recognized or for any audio comments or questions, we will be recognizing a speaker at a time. If that's the case, please move to a quiet area so we can hear your comments and feedback clearly. Please be respectful of other ideas and perspectives. We welcome support critique of ideas here, but they are ideas and we would ask that you focus comments in that regard. If, I don't anticipate this being a problem, but if anything is inappropriate, we would remove an individual from participating. And again, this is just one opportunity. There will be other opportunities ahead. But in the meantime, write down, remember, planning@a2gov.org. That is a great resource to get us questions or comments about any topic. So with that, we're gonna move on to the audience participation general at this time. So this would be an opportunity for anybody who does want to address the Planning Commission on a topic that we don't have scheduled for hearing, public hearing this evening, which is accessory dwelling units for transit zoning. Mr. Stolberg, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. I noticed at the budget meeting last night, there was a possible suggestion of a $100,000 expenditure to have a conversation about single-family zoning. So I know we're not talking about that tonight. But I look at that item and I look at the items that you're talking about tonight. And I know we're all thinking the same thing. Gee, wouldn't it be nice to have a master plan revision process? And I know we wanted to, we were about to, but COVID created some budgetary constraints and that we're not moving forward with a full master plan revision. But I would suggest we look at options for doing master plan revisions to parts of the master plan that would be appropriate for the level of discussion that we're having, which includes some of the items that we're discussing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who wants to address this working session for something that's not, that's not about ADUs or about the transit zoning, this is your chance. You can raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. All right. In the interest of time, we will move on to ADUs.
Great. Let me get, so Chris Chang and Jeff Khan are going to be leading this presentation. I see you, Chris. Jeff, are you there?
Yep, Jeff's here.
All right. Chris, are you doing that PowerPoint?
Yes, I'll make the presentation.
Okay, you should be able to kick off whenever you're ready.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Let me go to share screen. There. Now, can everybody see this?
Yep.
Great. Okay. So these are the revisions that were particularly taken under in 2019. So a lot of the planning commissioners may know this, but for the new ones and for the public out there who aren't familiar with the Chapter 55, the UDC stands for Unified Development Code, we're proposing to amend the accessory dwelling unit regulations. And one of the biggest changes being proposed, as you can see from our chart, is that we are, we are requesting that R2, R3, and R4 allow for accessory dwelling units. Not in the R6, that's a mobile trailer park type zoning. But we're looking at allowing these in all other residential zoning districts, not just the R1, which is single-family. An ADU is permitted on a parcel that has one single-family dwelling as the permitted use. In other words, even though it's allowed in the R4, R3, and the R2, it still must be a single-family dwelling to allow the accessory dwelling unit. And the owner shall occupy either ADU or the single-family dwelling on the property. We've also looked to strike some language. The ADU shall be designed so that the appearance of the building remains that of a single-family residence. Essentially, we're looking at that the entrances shall be located in the side of the building or the rear of the building. We're removing that portion. This one also is for the, is addressing the minimum lot sizes. It used to be, it had to be 5,000 square feet for an ADU. And then you would be allowed to build up to a 600-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. And if you're over 7,200 square feet, it would be up to 800 square feet. We're looking at removing that restriction. So smaller lots would be allowed to apply for an accessory dwelling unit. The accessory dwelling unit shall not be occupied by more than the number of occupants permitted by the Section 5.16.1A. So essentially, that's two unrelated persons max that could end their offspring in the accessory dwelling unit. We're also looking at removing some language in, in there that was, this is for detached accessory units. We previously had language that you had to have, say, a garage built and existing by December 31st, 2016, to come back in and apply for an accessory, a detached accessory dwelling unit. So we're looking at removing that portion of the requirements. And the total number of persons, this is kind of repeating, shall not exceed essentially four persons plus their, their offspring in the ADU. At least one off-street parking space shall be provided for the ADU. The property is within a quarter mile of a bus stop. Then additional parking spaces would not be required. It's my understanding, though, most of, at least for the single-family residential, is all within about a quarter mile of a bus stop. An ADU or a single-family dwelling that is not owner-occupied shall be subject to periodic housing inspections. So again, if it is being rented, it's going to be inspected by the city's rental housing department. And leasing or rental of the ADU for less than 30 days is prohibited, so that will continue. We still have kept the deed restriction that runs with the land. To be righted by the city shall be filed with the Register of Deeds. So the ADU may not be sold separately from the single-family dwelling. The owner occupancy requirement of Section 5.16D2 still applies, and the deed restriction shall be in effect until the AD is removed. So in summary of what we're proposing is that we're permitting ADUs on parcels with one single-family dwelling in any R district, one dwelling occupied by the owner, so somebody, the owner must live there, recorded deed restriction with specific content, two unrelated people plus offspring would be allowed in the ADU, four people total in both the primary residence and the ADU. It has to be a minimum of a 30-day lease, and we're looking at striking the minimum lot size. It was greater than 5,000 square feet, so now smaller lots can apply for the ADU. Permitted in conforming accessory buildings and one parking space for ADU or none if a quarter mile within a bus stop. Here are some pictures that I think we can refer to during our meeting, or at least for the public, if they want to take a look at what some of the, around the country, what ADUs look like, Laguna West, Sacramento County. Here's one in Kentslands, Gathersburg, Maryland. Here's a two-story in Ion, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. And I did get the pleasure of interviewing a current Ann Arbor resident that did go through the ADU process. And the interview, I'm going to hit play, and you could sit back, relax a little bit, and listen. And I'd like to thank Brian and Meg Fennick for participating.
Mr. Chang, if it's playing on your side, we're not hearing it. No, I think you, there's, you actually need to check a setting. I've had this happen in class.
Oh, what setting do I?
Good question. On screen, on screen share, I think when you go to share your screen, that there's an option perhaps. Yes. Commissioner Hammerschmidt is also nodding. That effectively says, share the audio too.
Share the audio. Share, is it share sound?
Yes.
Okay, let's try that yourselves.
Thank you.
Sure. Meg Fennick and my husband Brian.
Yes.
Excellent. Great. And what was ultimately the reason why you decided to construct an ADU in your detached garage?
Well, the first conversation was about a new garage. We had more of a shack than a garage. And so as we were planning out building a new garage, we talked about building a space above it as sort of like a multi-purpose use. So both for home office potential as well as rental potential.
And then when the previous ordinance was amended to allow for the hookup of utilities to the, to the existing home as opposed to new hookups to the sewer, that obviously reduced the cost considerably. And so we began to have discussions then about, well, maybe we can, you know, make this into a dwelling, you know, with a full kitchen and bath as opposed to just, you know, heated or your climate-controlled space, that we can actually, you know, do more with that for guests of ours, family. And then ultimately, we thought about, well, maybe there's, you know, some rental opportunity there for people who are looking for a place. And maybe, you know, are priced out of other markets and add some inventory for those types of people.
When you, as during the construction, and now that it sounds like you may have a renter in the ADU, did you have any issues with the surrounding neighbors?
No, if anything, we had neighbors stopping by and dropping notes in our mailbox to ask about our process and our plans because they wanted to build a similar type of structure on their property. So we didn't have any problems, any complaints, really nothing, but actually compliments of like, wow, that's a really nice-looking garage you have back there. So it was really smooth during construction.
Well, and I think that, yeah, the structure itself was not, I will say that, obviously, when there's, anytime there's construction involved on, you know, city lots, you know, you have to be very mindful, obviously, of not being too disruptive. And I'm sure that, you know, because it took quite a while. I'm sure that some, I'm sure that some of our neighbors probably had moments during construction where it was like, you know, okay, how long is, how long is the driveway going to be torn out or whatever, you know, whatever it may be. So we understand that. We try to be as respectful as possible during the process for that.
So how long did it take you to get through, let's say, the initial submission of your permits to the actual certificate of occupancy, would you say?
That was about a year and a half.
That's what I was thinking.
It was about a year and a half. But much of that was, it was less to do with permitting review and more about, I was kind of general contractor on it, and I did a lot of the work myself. So that kind of slowed things down. And then other times when we would get other contractors on board and they would, you know, then they would have permitting. And then ultimately, you know, as busy as the building department was at the time, scheduling inspections put a little bit of delay here and there, just in terms of getting them scheduled. But all the inspectors were great. It was just, you know, you know, just, it was just harder to get an inspection. But I know that the city's now doing some video inspections and also the same-day permit reviews. So if we were, if we were doing this now, I foresee that some of those issues, it might have, you know, we might have been able to shave off a few, a few months just based on that. And obviously, it's not like, it wasn't my, wasn't my full-time job. So, you know, I probably lost, I probably cost us, you know, a little bit of time too. I'll accept that.
Okay. And probably just, we'll wrap this up, and then we'll have you at our question and answer session in a little bit. But is there any suggestions you would have as far as amending the ordinance or anything that you can see that you think that may be helpful to get more people in the city of Ann Arbor to apply for an ADU?
So I feel like we've been fortunate in that we've already had three long-term rentals for renters. But there were people we had to turn away that wanted a shorter-term stay. So I feel like the 30-day minimum is a bit of a hurdle for renting it out. I can think of a family who, I think one of their children was having surgery at the university hospital, and they wanted a place to stay, but it was only for 10 days, right? So there have been times where we've had to turn people away who would have come to Ann Arbor, and I think it would have been a good fit for them. But, you know, sticking with the 30-day minimum has been a bit of a barrier.
And also, I think in conversations that I've had with people who've asked about a billion ADU, the, that has been a deterrent for many of them, not because they want to primarily use it for short-term rentals, but because, you know, they don't have the flexibility to do it at all, you know, over the course of a year. And, you know, they're not super cheap, they're not super affordable to build, right? And so any, anytime you're, you know, you can't have, I mean, if you don't have stu, if you don't have a student living in it, let's say, you know, like over the summer, and you can't rent it out for that, you know, maybe of surrounding art fair.
Or graduation.
Or graduation. Those, that's a, that's a huge deterrent for somebody because it's, it's like, oh, you're, so I can't, oh, I won't be able to do that. Well, you know, that was, we were considering that as part of, you know, the revenue stream for it. Also too, I think that the disparate treatment between short-term owner-occupied short-term rentals and ADUs, not only in the way that they're allowed to operate, but also the way that they're taxed, I think is is a deterrent for many as well. Because as it stands right now, if you have an ADU, the portion of your property that's an ADU, you lose your homestead exemption for that. So it's not, they call, they say it's not your principal, principal, primary residence. So you lose whatever percentage of it is. And then obviously, your taxes go up from being assessed as well or reassessed on the entire property. So when I've had that discussion with people too, that was kind of like, you know, like, whoa, that could really be a significant number. And again, I mean, if I'm an owner-occupied Airbnb and I rent a few ti, you know, I rent, you know, a total, let's say, 90 days throughout the year, do I lose my principal residence exemption for that? And so the disparate treatment there, I think, is a lot for people to swallow.
No one's looking for higher taxes in Ann Arbor.
Okay, great. That is a fantastic summary. I look forward to asking and hearing from you a little bit later in the evening, and I appreciate all of your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you for hosting us.
Okay. And here are some additional slides. These are the same ones that were shown as part of the ADU. They're enlarged, but we can, I put them in here just in case we want to refer back to them during our discussion. So same ones that Megan and Brian have, were shown as far as their ADU. And here's the interior. Again, here is what a typical, this is a detached accessory dwelling unit. You can see that if it's above the garage, a general floor layout, something that would be typical, that we're looking at trying to get approved in the city. And again, ADUs, they can, they can be in, you know, the upstairs area, the basement area. They can be as far as an addition onto a house, and they can be detached, as you can see on the bottom of the screen on, on the bottom. So there's a lot of varieties of accessory dwelling units. And again, Ann Arbor would be in the same category as probably, you know, Seattle and Portland. You can see that we're at least in Vancouver, 35%, but, you know, in Seattle and Portland, which are really the trendsetters, they're really only at 1%. So some, I think some questions that we can, you know, at least entertain or at least start prompting some discussion, you know, are, you know, are we allowing ADUs in all residential districts? Do we want to get rid of the section where garages have to be present to have, to have an accessory dwelling unit? So I want the public to keep those in mind as we go through our discussion. And I'll just wrap it up. The next steps will be, you know, moving on to the ordinance revision committee, moving on to Planning Commission. We're looking at a proposed date of March 2nd. We will have, you know, you know, public feedback along the way. After that point, we are hoping to send it to City Council once we get a decision from Planning Commission. And for the public, you can follow us at a2gov.org/planing, City Planning Initiatives under ADU amendments. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here along with, I think, Brian and Meg to answer any type of ADU questions the public may have.
Thanks, Mr. Chang. Brett, did you want to fill in anything?
So I wanted, maybe we'll spend a little bit of time just addressing some questions the best we can and clarifications. So I just want to share some of the questions that we've seen so far. One is a couple of questions regarding the owner occupancy requirement or primary resident exemption. To be clear, the current accessory dwelling unit ordinance and proposed still maintains a requirement that the owner of the property still need, that needs to be their principal residence. A couple of related questions to that are, one is, there's a question about sort of ownership structure. What would happen if that were in a limited liability corporation? In short, it would depend on the circumstance, but ultimately, that deed restriction is requiring, first of all, we're going to certify through the primary resident principal exemption that you, it is your owner-occupied property, and you are going to attest that you live there. In that ca, in a case of like the ownership of a trust or an LLC, you're going to need to just ultimately document to the city that you are the representative of that entity, meaning that requirement. There's also a question about why, why add the deed restriction rather than just control it in the ordinance? And the, while the ordinance requires it, the intention was always to make sure that we are effectively communicating to not only, essentially to future buyers of that property, that that is a restriction on the property. Without that deed restriction, there's a greater chance that the requirement is not conveyed from current property owner to purchaser. And so because that's a requirement of compliance, it's really important that that be maintained. And the deed restriction as a mechanism to make sure that through property sale or transaction that that continues and the information is shared. There's a couple of questions also about taxes. You heard a little bit about that in the interview. To be clear, we're not, we, I don't have detailed information on that, but that's something we can provide some more information on the website. In short, it could have some impact on your, on your property tax assessment. It is changing the use from just a owner-occupied to another type of use. So it could have that impact. We can try to provide some more clarification of that on the website going forward. Then the question about the size of ADU units and the setbacks, I guess I'll leave that to Chris, you and Jeff, if you want to address the questions. Is anything being proposed to change setback requirements or the size of units, whether they are integrated into a property or detached?
So the size, essentially as far as the minimum lot size, we've reduced that. It used to be you had to have a 5,000-square-foot lot. We're proposing to remove that. So lots with 3,000 square, 2,000 square feet, if they have the room in their rear yard for a detached accessory dwelling unit, they could build one there. But they are still capped. So if you're under 7,200 square feet, it would be up to 600 square feet. And if you're over the 7,200 square feet, you go to 800-square-foot ADU. As far as the setbacks, you know, the way the zoning reads for an accessory structure, it is three feet from the rear and side property line. I did have a discussion with the building department today. There is nothing in code that says that you have to move that ADU further than three feet from the property line. But anything within five feet would have to be one-hour fire rated. So there is building codes that would apply. So, you know, there may be advantages to moving it further from the property line. So, you know, there may be advantages to moving it further from the property line.
There's also a question, Chris, about height limits. Could detached, I presume it's related to a detached ADU, how, what, could that be taller than the primary house?
It's a maximum of 21 feet, but for the public to, to get a measurement, that's at the midpoint of a pitched roof or at the top of a flat roof. So 21 feet is the maximum.
Do, what is the status of ADUs in the city to date? Do you know how many are in process or certified?
Yes, I did check in on that and we have 23 active, um, ADUs that are being reviewed or have been approved, total.
The, um, there, um, a, a, a question about water and sewer being hooked to the main home and how it might send you into higher tiers. I don't, I don't have that specific question. I don't know that it would automatic, I don't know that the connection or adding an ADU would auto automatically send you into another tier. That would be additional information that I would have that we can follow up on the website. It's just not an area that I have the specific knowledge of. But if it is, if it, if the tiers are based obviously on usage, um, then that would be distinct from just the require, going to a different tier just by the addition of the ADU. We can follow up with that, that information on the, um, the website. And I think it's a good question for anybody who was ever considering an accessory dwelling unit, whether you're talking about taxes or the utility connections, these are all really important aspects to just understand as, as you heard from the Phoenix. You know, just being thoughtful and understanding all of the aspects of, of the project of taking it on. Um, a question about, do ADUs have ADA requirements? They do not. ADA tends to be more of a, it's a federal requirement, um, that it doesn't, um, it doesn't translate to an accessory dwelling unit. Certainly, um, you could meet, um, those type of standards if you chose to, but it's not a requirement that that unit has, has to do so.
There are a couple more related questions about kind of floor area that I've seen. One is, does a basement under, um, an ADU count towards the floor area? And another is those floor area thresholds that you gave before, is, does that apply just to detached ADUs or is it also attached?
So it, it, it applies to any type of ADU. So it's detached, attached, whether you've done it in the second story or in the basement. I believe the question regarding in the, in the basement, I, I would also say that it's going to have to meet building and housing rental housing code. So when they look at that, we're going to look at, I, I think the first thing is ingress and egress for safety issues there. But yes, it's my understanding, you, you could do one in the basement as long as it's meeting all the applicable codes.
Chris, um, and this is, this is, uh, a, a question about are the city's definition of family? Can you just give an overview of how the city measures family as it relates to a single dwelling unit?
Yeah, so in the R, in the R1 districts, R1 and R2, you can have up to essentially four unrelated persons and plus their offspring living in one household. In this case, I think for what people probably want clarification is for, for the ADU. Uh, the ADU would allow a maximum of two unrelated people plus their offspring. So it could be more than, you know, two people, but it would have to be their offspring. But when you're going with that calculation, that means if you have two in the ADU, you also can only have two that's living in the primary residence plus, plus relatives of their offspring. So it's a total of essentially four unrelated individuals that would be allowed as part of the ADU.
A question about, um, the owner, uh, the owner occupant requirement. That I think the question is, you know, what is, what is that trying to solve? Why should a, um, an investor of a property be any distinct from an owner occupied? You know, that could be a policy change that's explored. To be clear, it's not something we're considering at this time. I think that at, um, at the top, at the first expansion of ADUs, accessory dwelling units have been available in the city for a long time. They have slowly over history been, I would say loosened in their flexibility. This was just not a circumstance that it, that it evolved. And I, I believe at the time the policy was enacted, it was seen as having that owner occupant on property was a potential moderating force to any adverse impacts of that unit in a neighborhood. But it's a policy decision. It's, um, it, I don't think it's anything more complex than that. So.
Mr. Leonard, I, I see, um, an attendees had their hand up for a while in the participants panel.
Great, thank you. Hello, Ms. Lita, if you have a question on ADUs, go ahead. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Um, am I, am I sounding okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I wanted to, um, call in and just really appreciate the thoughtful review of this ordinance. I'm delighted to see that ADUs are being considered to be permitted in more zones. I'm really delighted to see the minimum lot size go away. That was really precluding a lot of especially more central lots from being able to consider an ADU. So that's exciting. And I'm also delighted to see the grandfathering restriction of existing accessory buildings go away. The changes that I'd like to request are actually not on the policy side. They're more on the communication side. As you've already seen, people often have questions about the tax implications and clarifying that on the website would be really helpful. I also think the water rates question is one that probably a lot of people will have in communicating that as well. I've also heard a bunch of people request a deed restriction template. And I don't know if that's something that you could provide on the website or by request, but making that more easily available, I think would be, uh, continue to make the process easier. And that's all I wanted to say for tonight, mostly just thanks for all the work.
Thank you very much. And that actually reminded me kind of about process for tonight, too. What I wanted to do, if there's other questions, specifically questions of clarification or how this would work, please feel free to chat them in. We're going to open kind of the, you know, ability to make comments up in just a minute. There's a couple more questions that came in that I think might help at least they ground my kind of understanding of this. One of them is, it, it, it sort of relates to, um, the discussion about, um, owner occupancy, but, uh, the relationship between short-term rentals and the timing of all of this. And, and this is, um, the, I'm going to read the question, but also kind of let people on the line know these things could well be linked. Short-term rentals haven't really been something that's been on our agenda. But I kind of want staff's update on where that is because I understand that it may be in the future. So the question is, um, that our discussion of ADUs started well before short-term rental discussion. Once the short-term rental discussion is sorted out, assuming that no more absentee-owned short-term rentals are permitted, would there be an opportunity to consider eliminating the owner occupant requirement for ADUs? And so can you help us understand that, Mr. Leonard? And kind of how these things work together? And, and I think that timing is, is my understanding of the timing as well.
Sure, so, um, uh, the city has, the city has adopted short-term rental, uh, and a short-term rental ordinance. And it does require both registration and places some restrictions on, um, where short-term rentals can be located in the city based on the ownership structure of those particular units. Subsequent to that, the city council also directed, uh, staff and you, the planning commission, to consider potential modifications that would take some provisions of that, particularly the locational requirements and ownership requirements and do them perspective instead of comprehensively across the city. So, um, we are in the process of starting, uh, those proposed amendments. They will be, um, some drafts of those will be posted probably sometime next week on the website. I don't anticipate that they would drastically change, um, the initial policy that was established by the city council, but they would likely, um, change the, the regulation of them to be, uh, both the licensing ordinance and zoning or the unified development code in concert. So, um, so that, that process is happening. I can't predict what the outcome of that process will be. Those would ultimately be legislative decisions of the city. However, um, whether or not currently accessory dwelling units are prohibitive towards short-term rentals because they must be rented for more than three days. So there, without change to that policy, even modifications to the short-term rental may not be directly transferable to impact of accessory dwelling units unless that provision is changed for some reason.
Got it. There's a couple more questions about tiny homes and.
Yeah. Let me, um, yeah, so, um, there's a couple of questions there. Tiny homes, um, they could be accessory dwelling units. The city doesn't have any minimum house requirements. I, I will just say from experience, um, we do require dwelling units to be connected to all the appropriate utilities. So sometimes that's a barrier to what, um, many see sort of more popularly as tiny homes. But it, in short, it could happen as long as it met all the applicable building code requirements. Uh, there's a question about if it's attached to the main house, how would this differ from a duplex? Uh, under the current regulatory structure, uh, it has to be a small unit. That is, um, up to 800 square feet or 600 square feet currently. And it has to be, uh, an owner occupied property. So a duplex could be equal-sized units with no size restrictions and the ownership is, is on, uh, unregulated. And then could detach ADUs, be pre-frabricated units properly anchored to a slab. In short, as long as it meets building code applicability, yes. As long as you, um, meet all the requirements for a dwelling unit, then, um, whatever construction methods can be utilized to meet that would be a problem.
There's also a question about zones and R2 districts being included. Initially, there was the Scrivener's error and then they weren't so much discussed tonight. Is that because the Scrivener's error, uh, was, um, included in our last like batch of edits to the ADUs? Is that right?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, to, uh, the Unified Development Code, UDC.
That's correct. Uh, the, uh, the, the city council has adopted a series of UDC amendments, including the addition of accessory dwellings to R2A zoning district.
So that's already allowed. This is expanding it beyond that and kind of linked to that because what we're talking about expanding or what's being proposed, expanding beyond is to single-family dwellings in multifamily districts. The question is, why then require, if, if, if you're in a multifamily zone, why then require, um, an owner occupancy requirement? What's the rationale for that?
Because it could be a circumstance where the underlying, uh, requirements for multiple units aren't met by that zoning district. There might be a requirement that you have a certain lot size that you couldn't meet otherwise. So this would be, um, probably most applicable in multiple family districts for single-family homes where the lot size was quite small and couldn't meet the requirements, um, lot area minimum requirements to do multiple units in a simple duplex format.
I think the questions that are left, so the questions that I see left, and maybe we did address these to some extent, or further clarification about definition of family and how far into your extended family do you go? I also, um, see one about, um, notice, and this could be broadly applicable. So what's our, you know, how does this link to, you know, what our opportunities are for notice? And then Commissioner Dish will ask her question.
So, um, from a notice perspective, this would, we would follow the typical notice requirements and, uh, of, as the code stipulates, for large, uh, for those zoning changes that might impact numerous properties. It is not, um, it is not necessarily sent to every property owner. So we would just, we would follow that same course. Part of, I think, the planning commission's initiation of this opportunity and trying to widely advertise this opportunity is recognizing that a lot of property owners might have interest in this. That was part of the basis for this, this question or this webinar before we get into any sort of formal consideration of the process. The question about, um, related individual. I, um, I, I'll, I'll follow up with this on the website as well. The UDC does not, um, seek to define that further. So I'm not going to off the top of my head, but it would, um, be, um, the, the intention is, um, relationship by probably family, uh, family status. So I'm not going to try to identify all of the potential ways that those relationships could be, could be established. But we can, um, do our best to provide some clarification. But I think, um, I think the ordinance is probably about as generalized as that reference in that question because it's probably, um, challenging to define it further. A question about how much of the area being considered for ADUs is not within a quarter mile of the bus stop? Most of the city is within a quarter mile of a bus stop. So I want to, I want to be clear, in most circumstances, uh, the parking space would probably not be required. That's the case both with the current zoning and the proposed expanded. And, uh, yes, the, uh, the current restrictions on the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit is based on lot size, not on house size. So, and likewise, I just want to emphasize that the structure is intended to provide either, um, there's, it is a physical arrangement of the property. There has to be ownership there, but the owner could choose to live in a smaller unit and rent out the larger portion of them.
So I'm not sure if everybody in the audience can see the full question, but the question was if I live in a 750-square-foot house, can I have an ADU that's 600 or 800 square feet larger than my principal residence? And yes, it depends on your lot size as proposed. Commissioner Dish, did you still have a question? You're muted.
Um, I wanted to actually raise two questions that I don't think we've answered. And it, the question about, um, one of them, I think Commissioner Mills, you raised, but I think that the person who asked this question wanted to know why, if you had, if you had a print, a, a, a single-family home in a multifamily zoned area, you would be restricted to only four, between the ADU and the principal residence, only four unrelated persons? Because the zoning in which your single-family home rests permits six unrelated people to share a single dwelling. I, and in this case, a, a, a principal residence and an accessory dwelling. So they're asking why it, why we don't allow for those ones that are non-conforming now in multifamily zones? Why don't we allow them to have more people between their single-family home and their ADU? Did I ask that? Did that make sense in the way that I posed it?
Yes, and I didn't read it.
Okay.
Properly. I guess both questions, though, are, are interesting to me, so.
Okay, that's one of the questions. And then there's a bunch of questions about older, like pe-, older people who might have an ADU, which is part of a care arrangement. And could there be some kind of exception to this owner-occupied rule? Because if the older person has to go into a, uh, an assisted living facility, then the person who was living in the ADU gets kicked out or, um, how long? If, if the person had to, if the older person had to vacate and their home, but didn't quite sell it yet? Because those things can take a while when you're dealing with all of the other things that happen at that stage of life. How long would the person in the ADU have before they would have to vacate it? Vacate it, sorry. Those were two things I saw that I didn't see raised. So I'm sorry to throw two at you at once, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, no, um, so, uh, to the, to the former question, um, I think our intention is to, um, as part of these amendments are actually linking back, uh, the maximum occupancy to what the ordinance provides as a base occupancy. So I think that that change, um, is appropriate, if, if not already reflected in, in, in the reference. The example that was provided was for, um, the majority of the single-family residential districts. But as you indicate, we do have, uh, a, a small, a segment of residential districts that allow for up to six, uh, unrelated rather than the four. So I think the intention would be that that would be similar. As it relates to, um, particular, um, compliance questions, um, can certainly look at that. My initial reaction is that I, I think, um, I think the ordinance ideally sets out our expectations for how this must be operated and, and maintained. I, I'm a little hesitant to start building in exceptions or qualifications of particular scenarios in that regard. But it's some, it's something we can certainly look, look, look forward to. Probably more generally as to how these are realized or how they potentially are they, when they, when they go away for whatever reason, what is that process looks like? So we can provide some more detail on it, what that will look like.
Commissioner Melstein.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard, question for you in regards to non-conforming lots and our non-conforming properties. So for example, our four, our four properties that require an eight thousand square foot lot size, but the lots are generally smaller. How would, and I'm just giving that as one example of non-conformity, but how would non-conforming properties, how would this apply to ADUs? And I guess how, how would it apply and how does it apply now? I guess I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure how it works right now.
Well, right now you have, we have base requirements that really, for particularly non-conforming small lots, for example, you don't have that ability to do so. If that were, if that minimum lot size were eliminated, I think this would, this would, this would obviously be a permitted accessory use of any use that we've already identified could a, a single-family use, can you continue on that property? So as long as you were meeting the conditions of the requirements, you might be limited in that circumstance, just from practically the ability to do a detached unit, because you just might not have the, the space to do so. But I don't think that that circumstance would prohibit conversion of a portion of the basement or an upper floor or potentially an addition if the space were there to be able to realize that the probably the more impactful aspect of that would be setback compliance. So it might force you into seeking to do it as an integrated ADU within the existing structure as opposed to any addition.
And that would be similar in historic district as well, probably.
Yes, and of course, any, any exterior changes would be subject to that as well.
Okay, thank you.
There's a couple of questions that are left and I think our questions are dwindling. So in just a minute, people can start raising their hands if they want to make a comment. And again, we've got another item that a lot of people want to talk about. So keep that in mind and as you think about the length of your comment. The questions that are left are, do we know how many units this might apply to? How many could feasibly be, you know, are in R one districts that currently are eligible to have ADUs and how many now then expanding to different zones this would apply to?
Well, currently we have around twenty thousand, I think, R one properties. So right now ADUs could be realized in all of those properties. They couldn't be realized as detached structures, but all those properties would potentially be eligible for creating an accessory dwelling. This would, it wouldn't add to the, this would add the number of multifamily properties that might be eligible. I don't have that number, but that's something we can post on the website. I think what this impact would probably do is add more options for an existing set of properties and how they might choose to add an accessory dwelling unit to their property where they might be otherwise limited to their options now. But it wouldn't, other than the multifamily districts, it wouldn't change who can and who couldn't. Then the only other piece of that would be relative to the minimum lot size. So if you, right now, if you were under the minimum lot size, you'd also be prohibited. That change would happen as well, but I don't have that number off the top of my head. Chris, Jeff, I don't suppose you have that not number. If not, we will definitely post that on the project site as well.
I, I do not, but I was thinking of the exact same question today and I'm sure we can go with our GIS consultant and run some numbers and, and come back and at least post something that gives us a general idea of how many lots would be eligible.
And there, there's a, a question about posting these questions to the website. We will definitely do that. If you, if other questions come up, again, just to plug, planning@a2gov.org. We, those project pages will be living documents, living resources for us to add additional information. So your question, this is not your only opportunity for questions. If there's something that you don't see there that you were expecting to see there, please likewise reach out to us.
This is also not your only opportunity for comments. Some people have been posting comments into the Q and A function and we've acknowledged them and those will be part of the public record. If you would like to make a comment about ADUs before us, please feel free to raise your hand through Zoom and Mr. Leonard can unmute you, allow you to speak. In the interest of time, since most people are interested in both things, if you can keep your comments to like a minute and a half to reserve another minute and a half, if you want to comment about the transit zone, that'd be appreciated. Before we open the lines broadly, Commissioner Abrams, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm realizing that I spoke out of turn earlier, so I apologize for that. And I I wondered if we could address a question that I see in the Q and A about the deed restriction, which is that if in the future we lift the owner occupancy requirement, we all know how hard it is to remove unenforceable deed restrictions. We currently, you know, had a presentation about this regarding racial covenants, but yeah, I think this is an interesting question. I'd like to hear answer from staff on this.
Yeah, I, I think that these deed restrictions would be a different category than racially exclusionary deed restrictions on the history of either the deeds or plaques or what have you. They are two-party agreements at their core and we, in short, if that requirement went away, then yes, we would, I would anticipate, we would take the steps to eliminate those either upon request or more proactively. Obviously depending on how many, when that happens relative to our overall quantity of accessory dwellings.
All right, Mr. Leonard.
And then the last two questions again are about taxes. To be clear, I, I just want to be absolutely clear. They could have impact to your assessment. It could have impact to your tax rate, your principal exemption. I will endeavor to get some more info, we'll get some more information about that. The UDC doesn't really address that though. Those are independent requirements, but I understand that those are questions related to these policies. So we'll make sure we get as much clarification there as we can. And with that, Chair Mills, I'll start recognizing some commenters.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Hughes, if you'd like to address the planning commission on accessory dwelling units.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so I had some notes that I jotted down here. I, I was asking questions about the number of unrelated adults because I've seen that there are places where it can be, where that can be. Those type of things can be enforced in a discriminatory way when there's people who are from another culture that use, that live in larger family units. And then, you know, it's like, well, you know, the government comes in and says, well, that's your second cousin. That's not family. And you know, they, and they'll enforce that in ways that are discriminatory towards particular cultures or races. I'd like us not to see, be going down that road. I think in general, we shouldn't be having the government in the, in the business of deciding what counts as a family. And let's see, the other things, I saw that this was going to require some off-street parking. Is that right? If, if that's true, what I'm, what I'm going to say is that I, I don't want us to require off-street parking. The city council has declared a climate emergency and our A two zero plan says that we should be drastically reducing vehicle miles traveled. So this is a bad time to be requiring people to continue perpetuating car culture, even if they don't want to be perpetuating car culture. I guess there's an exemption of that, of that for if you live near a bus, a bus stop and that applies to most places. If we, if we're going to create a law that's already exempted everywhere, just don't, just don't do the law. Don't require any off-street parking. And then the last thing was I was, I was worried that the you know, the deed restrictions would last forever, even if the ordinance changed. It sounds like you talked about that for a second, but my dog was doing something, so I couldn't hear. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I take a quick crack, I think, at possibly answering the definition of family?
Go for it.
Okay, so I, I just, I'm reading directly out of the UDC. So a dwelling unit may be occupied by one of the following family living arrangements. A, one or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, or guardianship, living as a single housekeeping unit in all districts. So essentially I look at that as you've got eight is enough, you've got twelve is enough. If you're related, you can, you can live in a single family home under, under one roof. Or I think it goes when it gets into accessory dwelling units, a maximum of four persons plus their offspring living in a single housekeeping unit. So again, you could have, let's say you've got two in the accessory dwelling unit and two in the, the house. If they're offspring, you could have as many as you want, as long as it's still meeting housing code. They're going to look at it because you have to have minimum sizes if you're renting something out as far as how many occupants can be in there to meet rental housing code. So I know it's kind of simplified it, but maybe we can even go further into it as, you know, questions come up.
Thank you.
Mr. Spalding, you have a few minutes to address the planning commission. Mr. Small, Mr. Spalding, if you can unmute yours, unmute yourself, you can address the planning commission. Mr. Spalding, go ahead.
Looks like he's connecting to audio.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we can move to the next person. Put him on hold for just a minute. When he connects in, then we'll
Yep.
Get him back in.
A caller with a phone number ending with six, four, four. You can address the planning commission.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. While city council and planning commission often promote the impression that ADUs are a mom and pop sort of enterprise, which will have minimum impact on the community, on the community, loosening the restrictions on building ADUs could change this. Out-of-town real estate investors are watching what happens regarding Ann Arbor's ADUs and they would love to get into the act. Meanwhile, many of the more than twenty thousand Ann Arbor single-family households who would be directly affected by a loosening of ADU restrictions have not yet heard that this is being considered. The most significant proposed change is to allow a second detached habitable structure to be constructed in the setbacks in every single-family zoning category. That means that a second house could be constructed on every lot in every single-family zoning category. In my view, if two detached houses are allowed where previously only one house was allowed, then this is in effect a rezoning. That means that each of the more than twenty thousand affected households should be notified by a postcard that this rezoning process has begun. Mailing all of us a postcard announcing the rezoning process that is beginning tonight is the fair and equitable thing to do. It would allow for the maximum number of Ann Arbor residents to take part in the process. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. I don't, oh, Mr. Spalding came back in.
Sir Spalding, you can address the planning commission.
Hey, apologies about that. I wanted to take a minute and I wanted to definitely echo Michelle Hughes when it comes to the, the requirements for the amount of multiple family members that are non-related people living in the same households. It's a, it's a complicated issue. The city of Denver actually just did a really, really big discussion on that. And I, I think that opening up the discussion when it comes to what the implications of that policy are is super important. I think that there's a lot of scholarship on top of that. A lot of it comes from the University of Michigan about social pressures towards the the, the patriarchal nuclear family that were very, very pervasive from nineteen fifty throughout the nineteen eighties into nineteen nineties. And those were also very, you know, in an alarming way, kind of intricately tied to the militia movement through the the, you know, the, the religious right side of stuff. And a lot of this takes place, takes place in northern Michigan and in west Michigan. And unfortunately, we've seen the results of that this, this last year from spring until you know, unfortunately, January sixth. And so it, it's super important that when we're in a place like Ann Arbor that we, we do examine those deeply seated social pressures that are completely structurally ingrained in everything that, that we're doing or considering things like this. And it seems so simple and so new with the accessory dwelling unit phenomenon, I guess, that, that's been happening, but it, it's a, it's a real opportunity here to examine, you know, another aspect of kind of the racist history of, of unfortunately, the way that we plan land use in this country. So I, I'm kind of happy that, that we, we kind of turned in that direction. We're talking about ADUs. The other thing that I want to talk about real briefly for real is that when, when we're looking at restrictions for owner occupancy, we can spin that any way we want. And I, I'm very happy to hear the suspicion on the part of Brett there. Because at the end of the day, to me, when I see the owner occupancy requirement that just reads like we're trying to make this more difficult for folks to have. And actually, it reads mostly like anti-renter sentiment, which if you view the entirety of American land use policy through the lens of homeowners having getting access to power and then implementing anti-renter policies, it makes a lot of sense of a lot of things that have happened in the past in the United States. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you so much for this discussion, the chance to talk.
Thank you. And I just wanted to acknowledge that one of the Q and As that came in was along the same lines about particularly towards the second comment. So it's been acknowledged and more discussion will come.
Mr. Caruso, if you can unmute your phone, you can address the planning commission.
Hi, thanks for the working session tonight. Appreciate it. I think when I attended previous meetings, I think maybe like two years ago on accessory dwelling units, there was a lot of confusion about taxes and tax issues related to ADUs. And I think that's an important issue that people need to look at because it may affect how much money they can generate with an ADU, that they're not going into this with the wrong impression about the kind of income they can generate. The tax ratification from my memory was pretty, pretty significant. You know, that part of your house becomes a, a income property and it's taxed totally different. So I think the city needs to be clear on that upfront with the, and I I thought there would be some discussion of that tonight, you know, more detail. But I appreciate the time. Thanks much.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard, are you frozen?
No, sorry, I was just clicking erroneously. Mr. Supanich, sorry if I mispronounce your name. You can address the planning commission.
Yeah, hi, I'm actually his son. I have a question, which is what I'm not understanding from any of this is how it benefits the push for affordable housing. Because it doesn't seem to me that there are any safeguards for the actual movement of affordable housing that are being addressed here. And as far as I know, what most Ann Arbor residents are interested in when it comes to changing the various zoning restrictions about accessory dwellings is that the purpose of those would be to guarantee affordable housing in Ann Arbor. And all that I'm understanding from this presentation is that there are ways for people who build accessory dwelling units on their properties to make money off of it. But I don't hear anything about a price ceiling that would guarantee that these are affordable dwellings. I don't hear anything about about that social movement. So if there, if you actually are interested in in making this a community thing, then there need to be protections in place that guarantee that it will be. that guarantee that it will be affordable housing, and not just another way, uh, to extort those who, who are looking for housing and can't afford their own homes.
Thank you.
Mr. Solberg, you can address the planning commission?
Thank you, I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, I want to talk about stormwater, but first, I want to echo, uh, what that, uh, last caller said. And I think it's imperative that we have some goals that we decide, you know, what is it we're trying to achieve? And have some metrics, so we can measure, are we achieving what we're trying to achieve? So whatever it is, if it's affordable housing or some other goal, let's state it, and let's figure out how to measure it. And that, obviously, we're trying to do more than simply have more ADUs just for the sake of having more ADUs. Uh, there must be some reasons, some goals, so let's state those in writing, and let's create some metrics, so we can measure the success of the program and see how it's doing as it goes along. The point that I did want to make up that, uh, we have with the global climate change is stormwater. In Michigan, we get more stormwater, more rain events, more total volume of rain, uh, every year, and it's been trending up, and it's likely to continue to trend up. Our current built environment, uh, was built at a certain, uh, regulatory level to handle stormwater. Uh, and we can't go backwards and mandate that, uh, everything be brought up to current codes, or what we think future codes might even be. Uh, and here we are, we're adding a lot of impervious surface through ADUs. Uh, by the way, I want to mention that I am in favor of expanding ADUs, so I want to make sure that that's clear. Uh, but I want to make sure that we know what we're doing, that we deal with our stormwater issues, uh, as we progress with this. So, I hope that's looked at as well, and, and then also to have whatever we do to be measurable. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the next caller's coming up, I'll just say again, planning@a2gov.org. Any comments, um, emails that are sent to planning commission, make it into our packet. We received a very thick packet before this. So that's, you know, if you've got a long form of something that you want us to read, that's a good way to get in before all of planning commission.
Hello, Mr. Ketter Paul, uh, you can address the planning commission?
Yeah, hi there. Uh, yeah, my name's Mishant Ketter Paul. I am a graduate student at the U of M. Um, I'm also a lifelong Ann Arbor resident, uh, born and raised. Um, and so, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, make clear my support for the changes to the ADU ordinance, and I would like to urge you to go, uh, farther in your recommendations, um, namely to eliminate the owner occupancy requirement, um, as well as to permit short-term rentals. Um, you know, the, the interview highlighted one good case for short-term rentals, that we have people who come in, uh, maybe for medical procedures, to the university, to our hospital. Um, but also ADUs are a good way to house tourists and, and, um, to kind of support, uh, Airbnbs and then that kind of, uh, lodging for tourism. Um, I'd also urge you to eliminate the parking requirements. Obviously, like you said, most parcels are within quarter mile of a bus stop, but I think it's a good idea, um, even for those other parcels, uh, to not put barriers to building ADUs, um, and, uh, or perhaps to increase the distance to bus stops to maybe a half mile, so that we can permit more ADUs to be built. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think, seeing no hands up, this seems to be a nice opportunity to transition, um, after, according to my clock, an hour and five minutes, which isn't too bad, um, to the second item, uh, tonight, which is the discussion of transit. What, uh, how have we titled it? Transit zoning.
Let me do a quick shift around of staff, um, and I think, um, Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll be recusing myself from this particular, uh, conversation, just given my employment with Oxford. Um, thanks.
All right.
Sarah, should I, um, hop off this, and I'll just watch it kind of as an attendee at this point?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll move you.
I was, yeah. You can either hang up and call back in, or you'll just be demoted.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thanks, guys.
All right, and to note, a couple of comments that have come in, if you, you can continue to use Q and A, if you want to share either comments or questions about ADUs, um, we'll use the same format in this discussion about transit zoning. So, like before, we'll start off with a staff presentation of kind of the lay of the land as it is right now, um, and get some clarification questions, and those are easy. Like, if you can type those in the Q and A, as you saw, that was super efficient. We got through a lot of questions, um, the last time around. Um, and then we'll open it back up for, um, um, comments, uh, uh, once we go through the, the majority of those questions. So, but any comments that have come in that are about ADUs will be logged, and, um, responses to the staff's best ability will be available after the meeting.
Uh, city planner Alexis Delio, take it away.
Good evening. You can see that, did I screen share properly?
Yes.
All right. So, good evening, welcome, or thank you for staying for this segment of the Planning Commission's February 9th fourth session. I'm Alexis Delio, city planner. I'll be first getting everyone quickly up to speed on this project. It was an on, on again, off again, back on again project. Um, and it is to create a new zoning district for the Unified Development Code, the UDC, which is our zoning ordinance. It's gonna be a mixed-use district for corridors that already have regular AATA service. We're planning for this TC1 district to be located in the South State and East and West Eisenhower area. This screen shows the west half of that area. It's currently mostly zoned office, that's shown in purple, or PUD, that's light orange. This half of State and Eisenhower has a lot of office use, but there's a good bit of retail and restaurants, and some residential in the form of assisted living facilities here. The other half of the area on the east side of State Street, it has more zoning districts technically. There is C3 in red, um, offices again, purple, and there's one parcel of parking district shown in gray. It leans much more heavily towards actual office uses. There's very little retail and no residential here on this, this corridor. Let me start by saying that we already have nine mixed-use zoning districts right now. Uh, the grid on the left is a snip from the UDC use table. You may be able to see, it's a little bit small, but there is a group for residential districts, uh, a column grouping for mixed-use districts, and a group for non-residential special-purpose districts. And then you can see from the summary of uses, that each one allows the full spectrum of residential from single-family to multifamily already. The mixed-use districts kind of build upon each other. The office district allows residential offices, personal services, and restaurants. Then, um, you add in retail and indoor recreation with the C1 districts. Wholesale, retail, outdoor recreation, entertainment, and auto-oriented uses are added in the C2 and C3 districts. And then actually downtown uses pull back a little bit, um, they don't allow the outdoor or auto-oriented uses. So what this project is seeking to do is add a 10th mixed-use district. Um, as a side note, we can get in some other time about whether it might be time to consolidate some of the C1s or something like that. But it's a much bigger undertaking, actually, to retool some of the existing districts, and then rezone, um, selectively rezone and whatnot. It's actually more effective and efficient to create this new district, especially when we have such a specific and geographic goal in mind. Um, to create this new district, we're gonna borrow the good bits from our existing districts. Our draft, which we have, um, a rough draft, first draft online. Our draft takes the permitted uses of the D2 and C1. We take the placement standards from the office districts, the form-based standards, like we have downtown, with their character overlays, and, uh, maybe half of our permitted uses already have some sort of use-specific standards. So it's an established practice already. There are some common components to any zoning district. Each district has an intent statement, describes the what, where, and why for the district. Um, we will be finalizing, we haven't yet, what the intent statement for this TC1 district will be. But it's most likely gonna have phrases like, "It's intended to facilitate, encourage, and support redevelopment and infill." "It's appropriate along existing transit corridors with regular fixed service provided by the ride." Uh, "The district will further the goals expressed in all of the elements of the master plan." Another common component of any zoning district is permitted uses. The draft, um, T, of the TC1 uses are generally based on the downtown C2B, C3, but we've excluded those that are solely vehicle-oriented. Uh, and then use-specific standards are common components of code. For the proposed TC1 district, we will have some very specific use-specific standards, which are gonna ensure that we're getting the uses and physical form of development we want. I'll be asking for feedback and comments about requiring residential use. So here in this slide, um, it's not finalized, but you can see, if there is a requirement, it will be found here. There will definitely be building design and site design standards for the TC1 district, and these are some of the things we're considering. Here's a screenshot of the dimensional standards table in the UDC with the new transit district inserted to show what the amendment and the ordinance will actually look like. You'll can see and get a sense that the TC1 district is not radically different code language. We're, we're continuing our established pattern. The key, though, I believe, is for the TC1 district to have not only maximum, but some minimum standards, to nudge along development in the direction we want and need it to go. Uh, more on that in a second. But as I wind down this really fast presentation, I'll point out that we're writing the TC1 district with replicability in mind, just like there's a C1A, C1, C1A, C1A slash R. It's certainly possible to tweak and edit this TC1 district to create a TC2 or 3 and so forth, so that they can be tailored to other corridors, transit corridors. Um, now, um, because I like to talk fast, concluded my, the bulk of my presentation, but I'd like to open the working session first to any technical questions or clarifications about what I just said. And then after that, I, um, would like to hear feedback about any comments, um, that you might have. I'm especially interested in feedback about requiring residential uses or any other use, and maybe how much, um, also about height limits, open space, parking requirements, and critical design features, um, that are gonna be, uh, specific to this district. Please, and thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Leo. Um, let's see, the questions so far that have come in are more along, are, some of them are still comments, um, on ADUs. Um, is there anything, Mr. Leonard, that you wanted to add in, or I think that there's a question about, uh, the map, and where that might be found?
Um, the map, um, I will move ahead one slide, uh, but I will go back, so you can see the website. Um, a2gov.org slash planning is our website, and if you click on the planning initiatives tab, um, or here's the full address. But on our page, um, we have some supporting documents, including a October 1st, 2019 PowerPoint presentation. And those slides are in that presentation. And then tomorrow, when this presentation is posted, it'll appear again.
And then Alexis, could you just go back to the map and just orient people quickly about,
Sure.
what that geography is?
So, um, so you can kind of get a meaningful sense. I had to split it into two slides. This is the west half again. Um, State, oh, I need to use a pointer probably, right? All right, hold on. Is it the pointer? There we go, laser pointer. Okay. Uh, this is State Street, coming down here, this is Eisenhower. Um, 94 is off the, is off the page. Um, for example, here, um, around here is Olive Garden. Um, around here somewhere is a gas station, I think is Red Robin. Um, here is the Briarwood Mall. Um, here, somewhere near here is where Art Van used to be. Um, so this area stretches from State Street down Eisenhower. Here is, um, South Main, and we're extending a little bit past South Main to encompass the full office area. And the other half, um, again, this, now this side is South State coming down. And here's Eisenhower coming across. Um, this here is Boardwalk, and this is, um, the railroad track. There's a gas station here at the corner, this right here is, um, it's Wolverine Tower, right? That's what they call it, I think. And then here, where the O label is, is the 777 Eisenhower Building. Um, I think there's a Burger King right here, um, and there's some, um, couple restaurants in this area.
Thank you. Commissioner, there's comment, or questions coming in, thank you for those. Um, Commissioner Gibrandle, do you want to ask yours before we, um, start to move to the questions that were submitted?
Uh, thank you, yeah. Um, one is, I'm wondering if, um, there has been any planning with this to require that there be, um, good pedestrian or bike lane access in these specific areas. I know that section of State, once you cross over Eisenhower and you're heading to the south, is pretty scary on a bike, and I think that we can't forget that, um, buses are coming, but for something that you think is gonna be less than a half hour in terms of getting somewhere, it makes more sense to walk or bike if you don't have a car. And so, I would encourage us to think about how we have those other pieces of infrastructure in place, not just transit for, you know, by, by bus, but also, um, good pedestrian and bike access in those areas as well. So that's, um, one piece that I would like to make sure that we're, uh, capturing. And then the other thing is, um, and I'm sure you have your reasons for this, but I'd just be curious to know, to hear what they are, is it seems to me that Briarwood has a real possibility for kind of redevelopment because of, you know, all kinds of issues, and that, that is decidedly out of this. And there is transit that, that flows through that, and I'm just wondering if that was ever part of your consideration.
Um, Briarwood was not included in, in our concept of transit corridors. I think that, I think it's ripe for redevelopment, agreed, and I think its future should be more, should incorporate a lot of these features, um, that we're talking about. But I, I think in our minds, and we can be talked, and we are open for discussion, but in my mind, the State and Eisenhower really function more as corridors. Um, they've got big boulevards, they're corridors. I think that Briarwood should be viewed as more of, um, could become a neighborhood, or more of a node, a little more self-enclosed, maybe that's not the right word. Um, I think that Briarwood could perhaps deserve some sort of treatment like we're talking about, but I do think it's not so much a corridor, it's more of a center. And, but, what does the group think?
I see Mr. Leonard raised his hand, I can see you, Commissioner Clark, too, and I want to come to you. There's a couple of questions also that came in that are related to this. So, I'm gonna let you speak first, Mr. Leonard, and then might jump in and ask those.
Thank you, I just wanted to, yeah, a couple of related questions. Um, first of all, I wanted to, uh, acknowledge, uh, Matt Carpenter of Ride, who, uh, has joined us graciously this evening. Um, for questions, have we had any collaborative meetings with, um, uh, the Ride? I hope that, I hope that, um, Mr. Carpenter would agree, the answer is yes. Um, I think it's not unrelated to the conversation about Briarwood. One of the, one of our initial, um, sort of approaches to this is, how does our land use policy help, uh, fuel? fuel the transit that exists in our community? At the same time, I think we need to be very cognizant that we are not using this in such a way that we are expecting it to necessarily drive new transit routes. I think at its, at its outset, it is most successful when we are building on the, on the existing transit routes in our community, thus our focus on existing corridors. It's not to say that there might not be opportunities in future. I think when you, I agree, when I think about Briarwood, obviously a ton of potential there, probably a bigger conversation about how it relates into our, our infrastructure network, our street network. How does it feel more like part of our connected infrastructure network as opposed to starting from an expectation of building density there that we got to find a way to get people to? But I totally agree with Alexis, or excuse me, Planner Delio, the opportunity is worthy of consideration. Mr. Carpenter, I don't know if you want to jump in quickly to add anything or just be along for the ride?
Thank you, Brett, and thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Matthew Carpenter. I'm the CEO for the Ride, and Brett was absolutely correct. We've had a number of, I think, very fruitful and very collaborative conversations. We're happy to be a part of this. I'm feeling pretty good about the drafts that have come up. To the question about Briarwood, it's such a large space, as Brett said, with so much potential, it can't be overlooked. But one thing I would note is most TOD fronts the corridor. That's so that the transit service doesn't have to pull off and go into a site and then come back out, because that chews up time, creates a lot, a longer travel time for the other people on the bus, and ultimately contributes to higher operating costs for the Transit Authority. So while it certainly can be done, when you have a major site, and Briarwood may be a major site in the future, we pull into the mall today, for example. To the extent the TOD can be focused on the fronting corridor, fronting the street itself, the better for pedestrians. It shortens the walking distance and allows the bus to just move in a streamlined expedited manner through the community.
The related questions that I see while we're kind of on this vein is why this corridor? Why not all corridors? How did we choose this area? When are we going to get to the other areas? I think those are kind of all in the same vein. So I wonder if, I, my guess is that it's kind of a, you know, well, go ahead, answer.
I'll start, and if Planner Delio wants to add, we, you know, I think we envision this to be a new kind of zoning prototype. I, I think that there are, I think that there are nuances and characters that are different along some of the corridors that are referenced. I think that there are aspects that would be very equally applied in a very similar manner. There might be other development aspects of a proposed district that need some adjustment or reaction to a specific context. Specifically, for example, the, this area that we're starting at initially, I see it from having a lot of larger lot sizes. It's got a fair amount of parking, surface parking in that vicinity, which seems to be an opportunity for the intersect of reconsidering parking policy and adding additional uses to the, to those properties. It's also obviously served by transit. Those large lots provide, I would say, some flexibility on how to consider uses and even incremental change to existing sites. When you shift to some other corridors that have different land use patterns, for example, the Washtenaw Avenue corridor, that has a more, I would say it has more variety in both small scale lots and larger lots. They have different relationships with surrounding land uses. And in, in where you have, for example, a lot of smaller lots fronting on a transit corridor, the utility of a larger project may be challenging without land assembly. So again, I, I think the intention is to find the framework that is a little bit more progressive and advanced than some of our current zoning districts, and then using that to either then decide what level of experience we want to have with it before we start taking it to other corridors or considering how to adapt it to some of those other corridors. That's a long way of saying that I don't know exactly when we get to those other corridors then, but I think the opportunities in this potential area seem ripe. It's a great job center. It's a great opportunity to add some of the other types of land uses and amenities to make, perhaps have that area function a little bit more comprehensively. But the intention is to learn from it and apply it elsewhere.
Commissioner Clark, you can go ahead, and then I'll, as I kind of look through more of these and kind of group some more of the questions together.
I just have a quick question about curb cuts, and if more curb cuts are going to be allowed, and if there's anything about that, and then how that'll kind of, if that has any impact on the transit times and things, if, you know, if there's going to be increased curb cuts. And then my other question was just about like city services and trash delivery, things like that. If each site will be required to, if there's anything so far about like dumpsters and how that'll work, if it'll be, yeah, was there more detail about that?
I can, I think I glitched a little bit on the first component of your question, but you asked about some of the other development standards, like trash services and et cetera. Every redevelopment will have to be done through a site plan, and all of the development code will apply. What we're talking about is creating a new zoning district that has uses, area height and placement, area height and placement standards. But all of the other aspects of the code would still apply currently, unless we change it, the off-street parking requirements for the uses will apply, but also the landscaping requirements, buffer requirements, trash service, fire service, engineering standards, and so on and so forth. So, you know, these will be full-fledged developments. We're just hoping to get a different form of buildings.
Sorry, it's the first part, my question might have cut out, because it was, I was asked about if new curb cuts will be allowed, so like onto the transfer routes?
Great question, something that we'll probably evaluate. As it stands right now, the UDC regulates how many curb cuts a lot can have based on its dimensions and its frontage to the road. We, the draft currently doesn't speak to limiting curb cuts, but I think it can. So this is some of the details that we're, this is the purpose of fleshing out those details.
Commissioner Dish?
I want to make a quick follow-up to Sidira, to Commissioner Clark's question, which is more of a suggestion, which is, just as we should, we should consider including in the draft a limit on the number of curb cuts, I think we should also consider in our requirements about trash that, that the sites have provision for composting trash and recycling, because one of the things we'd really like to see for A two zero is commercial and multifamily residential composting and recycling rates go up. And one of the barriers to that is that oftentimes there's not an easy way to make room for all of the different bins you need to do all of those things and do them well. So that's something that I would like to see specified in, in a draft.
There's a couple of questions in terms of area height and placement. So let's start with heights. One is if you're not within 300 feet of an R district, what's the height limit in the drafted proposal?
Yeah. In the draft, it was unlimited height, and that is because that is the way the office district is currently set up right now. So we are replicating the office district. Three hundred, fifty-foot height limit in, within 300 feet of residential or unlimited. And we are proposing to replicate it. I believe the draft talks about an 80-foot height limit closer to residential, within that buffer, and then unlimited. It is open for comment, but that is what the draft says. But keep in mind, it's because we borrowed from an existing district. This is not materializing out of thin air.
And in this particular district, there, to be clear, there is a lot of office already there, so that, the idea that there is no height limit is already there in this particular corridor, which may not be true for all of the corridors. Is that fair?
Correct.
If a residential home, this is related, but maybe there's a different spin. If a residential home was near this corridor, how high could a building be adjacent to this home? And there's a question about whether there's an overlay on a half a mile of a half mile on either side.
We're not proposing any overlay or any automatic buffering like that. For that single-family home, it would, it would depend on how, what it zoned. If it was a single-family home in an office district, there would be no special provisions for it as drafted. If it was a single-family home in a residential district, the, the draft says the tallest building could be 80 feet, as written. Going back to a little bit earlier question, though, another reason to choose and to start with State and Eisenhower, there's very little, in our defined area where we're thinking about rezoning, there's very little residential. And so we can do more, we can do more testing here, but also there is very little residential. This spot needs it, more so than some other, it's the most skewed in one direction. It has the least diversity of land use. But the question about adjacency to height, that would be the answer. But this district, actually, I don't think there is any single-family residential that abuts our target area.
That actually links to one of the comments, which is, why are you proposing this new zone, and what do you wish to attract to this area? I think the idea that residential is missing is you just answered. But then this lacks, that this links to a couple other questions, which is, why did you put a question mark on residential? If that's what we need, shouldn't we demand it so that we don't get more strip malls?
Yeah. So that's a real fundamental question that doesn't have a right answer. It's the answer that what is your priority, what do you choose? The pros and cons, if we require residential, clearly redevelopment is going to have residential. The con is, what happens if there's no market for this? Or a criticism of zoning is, it's so restrictive, it's so prescriptive. If we require residential, are we going to actually get nothing? What's better to have, to have more development and support transit, or to, you know, to have not enough development? Also, it's not clear whether every single parcel, every single development needs to solve every, needs to provide the solution for every ill. A downtown neighborhood, a beloved neighborhood, actually doesn't have mixed use on every site, but it has enough mixed uses, close enough together, that it's a mixed-use area. So it's a values and a priority and a balancing question that, you know, if you require every single development to have residential, maybe you're not going to overall have that diversity of uses. But I, this is exactly the feedback that we're looking for, is whether every single, every single redevelopment should have more than one use, or whether we should try to be getting at, there's office here, but then right next to it is residential, and then maybe another office, but then some retail, and then more residential. That's the kind of thing, it's hard to require organic development.
Mr. Leonard, go ahead and jump in.
I just want to add a little bit more to that. I appreciate the way this is framed. I, we've been talking about it a lot. We've talked about it with the Planning Commission as well. I'm looking forward to hearing feedback on it. I just want to set the stages, as, as laid out in the presentation, mixed use is allowed in these districts now. Mixed use is allowed in a lot of these corridors now. We don't get it, and I, there's a lot of reasons for that. Probably some of it is some of the development requirements, some of it's financing criteria. Some of it is, well, I'm sure there's aspects that I, I don't know of right now. And so part of the initial thoughts and some of the early concepts of this was, we are allowing these types of prototypes, but we're not getting them. So it would be a really natural step to take that a step further and require the type of development that we envision. At the same time, that is being balanced with a drastically changing snapshot of retail and commercial and our community and our, in our country, the world for that matter, to, I think that there are real questions, frankly, about to what extent we want to ensure that we're adding more commercial square footage in the context of changing how people shop and get goods. So, so I think, I just want to add a little bit more perspective of how that concept was first, why that concept was first introduced in this approach.
There's a couple other questions in terms of area height placement or parking in particular, and then I, and then there's a bunch of questions. Thank you for them. I see them, and I think we should come back to them and have a discussion about, like, why just this corridor? Is there interest in expanding this? I see those. Just want to kind of get through some of these other nuts and bolts things. So to what degree will parking minimums be specified? What, Mr. Leo, can you talk to us about what's in there in parking right now?
We talked about, we have drafted that there is no parking minimum, and that the maximums that are currently in code for office and retail still apply. Although we are specifying that there, we do have minimums for bicycle parking. So we are, we are recognizing that these projects are going to want some off-street parking of their own, but we don't want parking to be the barrier for the redevelopment. So if they can choose to lower their parking as low as they feel that they actually need, we don't want the parking to be in the way of housing, portable housing, or any type of mixed use.
Relatedly, there's a comment about if this is transit oriented, you've, but all automotive uses are not permitted. Is this an oxymoron? Like, and I think that the difference is automobile centric versus able to be attained through alternate means of transportation, yes?
Yes, yeah. This is not so much a transit district like in a, in a big metropolitan area with a light rail service. This is just increasing the existing density that we have on our main corridors of the city, most of which have transit on them. But if we can provide the opportunity for people to either live or work or play closer to a transit line, I think they'll use it more as, as more of a matter of choice.
I'm seeing Mr. Carpenter shake his head. Maybe, maybe you're shaking it at something else. You can feel free to, to chime in here. And, and maybe this is the right point to talk about why just this one corridor and not other corridors, and what is the plan? And, and I'll just bring up, because I think this, we did talk about this in, in the ordinance revisions committee at the end of last month, about the, one of the questions that was, that was raised in that was, we've recently gotten development proposals along West Stadium, for example, and the community was very engaged. You know, the development proposals were for things that would currently be allowed in the zoning ordinance, so maybe this is a time to rethink what that ordinance looks like. And so I think, I mean, in all transparency, it was a public meeting too, but in ORC, we said, why not West Stadium? I wonder if you could walk us through, like, why this corridor, why not that corridor, why not talking, why not talk about Washtenaw? A little bit more in the thinking? A little bit more in the thinking and perhaps related to kind of what transit is already there? Or whether you see this as really kind of a note, you know, the right node?
Yeah, I think that the Washtenaw corridor has a lot of, could have been chosen because it has the most transit and the most riders on it. And obviously some number of people on those buses would actually prefer to get off many stops ahead and live closer to where, where their, where their job is. But in terms of a corridor, Washtenaw is more mixed use already than State and Eisenhower. State and Eisenhower has the transit service, but it had, doesn't have the mixed uses. I think it needs the first boost. West Stadium has transit service, but it's not the, the ridership, the numbers there aren't anywhere near like they are on the other corridors. So we, and similar to Washtenaw, it has more mixed uses already. And so it was a judgment call to pick one. In Ann Arbor, it seems to work better if we go for incremental change. And so we picked the corridor to start where we thought we could have the most impact, the, the quickest and see the most change. We're not ruling out any other corridor. The other corridors are Plymouth, Washtenaw, State, Maine, South Maine and Ann Arbor, Selene. And the, the West Stadium going into North Maple. But the one that's most, the one that has the transit service, but also is the most single use is State and Eisenhower.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Abrams.
I guess I just wanted to, to make an observation, which is that I think one of the reasons why Stadium potentially has lower transit uses because it's more amenable to other forms of transit or transportation such as biking and walking and others. So it feels odd to me to, to kind of exclude it to a certain extent because it doesn't, because it's not, I think it's not simply about bus ridership, but it's about mobility, let's say, or micro mobility, other forms of getting around. So, and I just wanted to maybe log a comment for a later discussion. Cause I, I know we want to leave time to hear from the members of the public who've joined us. But I think reconsidering the, the targeted State and Eisenhower is, is worth a larger conversation. And I'd like to return to that and explore the possibility of opening it up. I think, yeah, I have a, some impatience, so.
Yeah, although I hear you valid, but some of the things that we're talking about. Whether or not residential should be required. What do we think about say, open space or, or height limits? And what are we thinking about with parking, you know, are we okay with no minimum parking? These will be the same questions, no matter what corridor we're talking about. So in some sense, if we get the fundamentals right, it will be easier, faster to replicate it and to expand or even flip the target area. So it's not, I think the key point and the fundamental point is perhaps not exactly which corridor we're picking, but what, how do we want any corridor to evolve? There are some commonalities to all of them.
I think one of the commonalities in all of these things too, and this is to one of the comments, is about these corridors lacking residential or at least directly on the corridor. And so there's a question, and I think it would be helpful for all of us to hear like, as, as Mr. Leonard mentioned, currently residential is allowed in all of these places. You could build it, anybody could build it or propose it, but we're not getting it. So do we have a sense of what, why that is and what are the options to do it? You can require it, right? Which is one of the things that's on the table is, and there's, there's what the percentage is that it has to be fifty percent? Or more or less than that residential is one way to do it. But what are the other things that, that we think are the reason that we're not getting residential? And how can we solve that?
I think a big component of it is financing and developer comfort. We hear it a lot. I, I personally can't prove it or disprove it, but we hear a lot financing. That financiers are very leery of mixed use, particularly putting residential over retail or, or something like that. And that they would much prefer to finance, it's a much shorter bet to focus on residential or focus on retail or focus on all. Think that's, that's what we hear is the biggest barrier. But also on the flip side, I can point to thousands of projects across the country that have retail on the first floor and residential above. So clearly there's a way to do it. And maybe it's local developer comfort. People wanting to stick within their comfort zones.
I think, I think a piece of it too could be the balance of development costs and rents. You know, we've had generally as a community, we've experienced a lot of residential development in the downtown. Those development prototypes are inexpensive and the market obviously has supported those to some extent. Again, I'm not professing to be an expert in pro forma analysis, but I would suspect that on some levels the cost of developing those units further out on, on these corridors, even with transit service might be more challenging because of the associated requirements. You know, even you're not, even though you're not doing structured parking along a corridor. That is a development cost and there, there might be, there might, there just might be realities of the rent cost and the ability to construct new residential in that framework.
Another question that is in here, and I just want to check on it. We talked about where we're picking the corridors in relationship to the, you know, where there are existing transit hubs. But there's, is there any plan or anything that's drafted about requiring denser housing or construction nearer to the, to the actual stop itself, the bus stop itself?
We aren't currently talking about having a graded density like that. Where we're hoping to control that is by where we rezone. We are trying to say in our intense and in our application of it that, that this zoning district would be appropriate fronting a transit corridor. And we don't yet specify maybe a distance, but it's currently implied. And maybe we need to be more clear that the, the depth of the district should be within walking distance of the, of the transit line. I think AATA, they can move their stop location. They can't really move the route, but, and we're not asking them to move the route. But I think they can possibly adjust their stops depending on what actually gets developed. But our loading up of where the density goes, we're just trying to get it more uniform across the, along the entire corridor, but not very deep. That's what we're intending for this.
Um, I want to acknowledge that it's nine o'clock now. And do want to give people an opportunity for public comment. So if you, I think a lot of the questions are still around the things that, you know, we've brought up. If there are others that I missed in looking through, feel free to type them back in. But if you have a comment that you want to make, you can raise your hand now. And again, try to keep it to, certainly under three minutes, but maybe a minute and a half.
And, and just again, anything that we're not able to address during this webinar, we will provide some additional information on the project website and don't forget planning@a2go.org. Mr. Yeah.
Mr. Levine, go ahead.
Mr. Levine, go ahead.
Hi, a couple of points. I want to revisit the Briarwood question. Almost all of Briarwood Mall is within a third of a mile of either State or Eisenhower. And Briarwood Mall is such an enormous target for redevelopment. Seems like the, the principles that are being developed here would be precisely the ones that we would want to guide. The redevelopment of much of the territory of Briarwood Mall, the zone, taking into account, if it, if it were to include Briarwood Mall, could be graduated. So for example, different requirements apply if you're over a third of a mile from a bus line. But it would be a shame to not include the large territory of Briarwood Mall that really is very well served by transit.
Thank you.
Mr. Spalding, you can address the planning commission.
Awesome. I, I just wanted to thank the planning commission for going over this. This is super important when it comes to transit oriented development. We have a serious situation statewide on the east side of the state, specifically in the counties surrounding Wayne County and in McComb and in Oakland County. And I, I think everyone here is familiar with the, the history there in terms of denial of millages for, for area transit. And I think that one of the things about development, and I, I know Ann Arbor is specifically aware of how, I guess, intend some of those discussions about adding density in places can get is that it's going to be more difficult for an activist like me, if I'm in, in a place like Royal Oak or Troy or Gross Point, to, to make an argument for things like ending single family zoning across the board. Because more than, you know, half the population isn't going to be willing to put in the academic effort to figure out, you know, what the origins of those policies are. So when it comes to transit oriented, oriented development in Ann Arbor, I really look forward to seeing a, a solid, not necessarily a model, but some successes here. And what I'm hearing tonight so far really makes me happy. You're all really participating very thoughtfully and going over the exact right questions. The exact right questions are coming up in the Q and A. People I've had disagreements with in the past are saying some really intelligent things. So I'm really happy to see this happen and I really want to be able to, you know, shine a spotlight on what Ann Arbor is doing in terms of transit arranged development, because single family zoning, ending that in a place like, like McComb County is going to be a little bit more difficult, but getting transit oriented development a little bit more approved is going to be possible. And that's the doorway that's going to open up to actually having regional transit. And I, I think that everybody here understands what's on the line when it comes to social and economic equity, but also climate change. When in Michigan, and my secret little theory as an activist and as a strategist politically is that Michigan isn't really that adverted to, to these regional transit projects. We're not that car focused at the individual level. We know what's at stake with our future. We just got to be able to take the risk and do it. So thanks for having this discussion again.
Thank you.
Kathy, if you can unmute your line and address the planning commission.
Hi, I would just like to make a comment regarding the height limitation. And I think even though the office area may have quote unlimited height, I would like to suggest that that not be in there. And I think the height requirement should be sort of looked at in the context of what's going around. So, you know, what's the average height of the buildings in that area? And that that should be kind of your guide. And, you know, you may not have, I mean, assisted living is not probably considered residential. But if you had really tall buildings around that assisted living complex, that's really blocking a lot of the sunlight. I think the sunlight is really important for older people to be able to get outside and not have to, you know, go far from where it is that they're living. And I would hate to see like these really tall buildings surrounding like an assisted living or a senior complex. And there's several of those along that Eisenhower Boulevard. I don't know how far it goes, but I think there's a couple of them along there. And I just, I'm, I'm worried about having an unlimited height. And I would like to see it a little bit, like I said, put in context of what's in the area so that it, it, it fits with sort of the neighborhood. And that would be one of my recommendations in terms of that height level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ketter Paul.
Yeah, hi there, Mr. Ketter Paul again. This is a great, the great, great sort of initiative and this sort of thing. I'd like to see more of the city of Ann Arbor responding to our climate emergency. Transportation makes up a large amount of our emissions and it's vital to get people out of their own private cars, a lot of commuters. And we'd like to get people out of their cars, off to transit, walking or biking to make progress on the carbon goals. So I'm in favor of the creation of this district. I'd like to see it go further, be expanded throughout the city. As a graduate student on North Campus myself, something like this along Plymouth Road would be fantastic. It's the kind of thing North Campus sorely lacks. So I'd like to reiterate my support. One thing I want to say is that I do believe that we should permit a hundred percent residential developments. I'm not super sure, but I am open to a hundred percent commercial developments. Though maybe there could be some kind of stipulation on existing residential density nearby. The previous caller had some comments about limiting heights. I think that limiting heights is actually not as, as much of a worry. And maybe we can kind of regulate that through setbacks or other sort of regulations. But I don't think anyone's going to build, you know, a four hundred story, four hundred foot massive tower or something like that in the city of Ann Arbor. There's just, just not that many of those. And so I'm, I'm not all that worried. I think that we should build as much dense development as close to transit as possible. So we can get people out of cars, make progress on our carbon goals, drive down housing prices so that Ann Arbor can be more affordable, especially for all the people, mind you, people who don't live in Ann Arbor, people who want to live here, who don't want to have their long commutes, don't want to, you know, have to drive in, get second traffic coming from Ipsy, from Brighton, from all around the city, et cetera. So this is the sort of thing we should be doing with the city and I'm strongly in support of it. And I would like this to be as ambitious and aggressively spread across the city as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, you can unmute your line and address the planning commission.
Hey, am I here?
Yes.
You are? Great. Hey, I, I kind of did it tongue in cheek about the Jetsons. I don't know if anybody knows, noticed that in the Q and A, but we're being pretty short sighted here. When Chicago built high rises, when they got to a certain height, they decided they should stare stuff them back so sunlight could still hit the streets. And, and to think that you can build an unlimited height is just, whoa. And the young man that just called, I assume it was a man, I'm sorry, but the, the chance that somebody would build a four or five hundred foot tower, absolutely. There, there's people that will occupy it, but to not have transit available parking is really short sighted. And why are we riding along in big buses? I don't want to stop eighty-three times before I get downtown to work. I want to hop on a small bus like a, one of those Navias or Navas. You know, fourteen people, twelve people on a bus, they should be shorter, smaller. Public transit can be auto driven, we don't need drivers. We're, we're being short sighted where the future is, isn't the future here now? And by the way, when you build housing, it's really important that you do it right. Because if you got open land, housing is the final crop. It's the last thing that's going to go there. You aren't taking out residential to do anything else because nobody's moving. Nobody wants to move off their homestead. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. As we're pulling the next people in and before folks get off the line, I just want to let you know we will be talking about both of these issues, both ADUs and this particular district at coming meetings. Mr. Leo, I know you showed it briefly. Is this plan, you, on your slide, it was something about ORC. Is this going to be on the ORC meeting this month?
Yes, I'll quick go over next steps. I'm not saying this discussion is over, but we're keeping on, we're going to keep on working on the ordinance. We've continued engagement and ongoing community discussions. The ordinance revisions committee, for those at home, meets every fourth Tuesday. The ordinance revisions committee, for those at home, meets every fourth Tuesday. So that means they'll be meeting Tuesday, February 23rd, 7:00 PM, Zoom meeting. And we will be talking about this again, about how to incorporate the feedback from tonight. In general, after we worked through the drafts with the ORC, we'll be going to planning commission. They meet on the, every first and third Tuesday. And city council meets every first and third Monday. We'll be going to one of the June meetings with council for that. But again, the, the next ORC meeting is on the fourth Tuesday of February. And we will be talking about both of these projects and the planning initiatives specifically about, okay, this is what we heard on February 9th. Where do we go from here?
Yep. Great. That was just to fill the time. The meeting's not done yet, but in case, no, we start to lose people, I want to make sure that we, they hear that part. So.
Mr. Westfall, if you could unmute yourself and address, you can address the planning commission.
Great. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thanks for, thanks for taking our input and for all the hard work on this. I guess my, my first, my first reaction is, is I'm really happy that, you know, this is being seriously looked at. I, I was on commission in oh nine, when, you know, the land use element of, of the master plan back then was, was signed off on and participated in a lot of these discussions. And you know, ever since then, we've been hearing this drumbeat about, you know, address the corridors. This is not the land use we want. This is suburbia, you know? We need housing. We want urban villages, not, not more townships coming into our, our borders. So I'm, I'm concerned that the scope is proposed to be limited. I'm wondering, you know, what, what adverse impacts do we, could we imagine if this were applied to all the corridors? You know, clearly there's some, some trepidation about height, you know? Frankly, I, you know, I, I think if you wanted to cap some of the height, if that's going to create more openness to this, if, if there's something that will literally guarantee there's no shadow on any current residential property. I would be, you know, I like density. I like variety height buildings, but you know, to me, it's worth trading that for the ability for all these corridors to stop, stop their reinforcing investment in suburban buildings and strip malls. By rezoning all of these, you know, it would, you know, most of the uses would stay the same for the foreseeable future. But it would allow the organic sort of transformation in a way that's fitting the vision that the community has, has said so strongly for, for over 12 years now. So I, I, I would challenge you to even thinking that the negative, like what harm could there, could come from, from applying this broadly? And that's my, you know, I've sent along some other feedback that's far too detailed, but I think this is my greatest concern is, is that we don't apply in enough areas. Thanks for taking my call.
Thank you.
Ms. Hughes, you have three minutes, up to three minutes to address the planning person.
Hi, I, I just like what I've been seeing tonight and I want more of it. I want, yeah, do this and do a lot of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gervini, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hey, is this working?
It is.
Great. Um, yeah. So first I want to say I strongly support the, the goals that, and the general ideas that are being outlined here tonight. I think it's great. Ann Arbor urgently needs more housing and we have a climate crisis. It means we need to significantly reduce vehicle miles traveled. So we got to make it possible for more people to live near where they workshop and play and get around without having to drive everywhere. As some of the other comments and questions have said, I, you know, my main disappointment tonight is that the area is being considered a pretty narrow. I, I live near the West Stadium corridor that's gotten a lot of attention tonight as an example. And, you know, I'm sure the planning commission usually hears people kind of concerned about changes happening near their house, but it's opposite for me. I would, I would like to see something changed with the West Stadium corridor. And, you know, as, as I think it was Commissioner Mills mentioned, you know, we've actually seen several proposals that are really auto oriented, low density projects coming up along that corridor recently, which would further entrench it, you know, maybe for decades as a car dominated area. And, you know, that's in spite of the fact that there's a lot of residences, including mine, that are in pretty easy walking or biking distance. So, you know, and of course I'm focusing on West Stadium because I'm selfish, but I think the same arguments probably work for Plymouth, Washington, et cetera. The way that I'm sort of looking at this idea in general is as creating kind of mini downtowns in Ann Arbor outside of the main downtown. And so that's definitely what I would like to see kind of, you know, with, within easy reach of my house. I, I, I guess I think that's a useful way to think about some of the questions that, that you're posing as open questions, like should we, should we require mixed use on every site? I, I understand the complexity of that, and I don't think I have a whole lot to offer because I'm not an expert in this field. The one, the one question or, or idea I might have is, could you have that restriction kick in only above a certain lot size? So if you have a smaller lot, a single use is allowed. If you have a big lot, you, you need to have residential and commercial, something like that. I think that's all I've got. So, you know, just, just want to thank you again for, for considering this. It's really exciting.
Thank you.
Mr. Stolberg, you can address the planning commission.
Hello, I want to echo what the last caller said and then add to that. As some of you know, I've been a proponent for mixed use nodes or hubs to create an ecosystem that does allow people to live, work and recreate in the same area that allows actual reduction in vehicle usage and hopefully in vehicle ownership as well. So the idea of mini downtowns, I totally agree with that. You know, what I'm hearing here is an introduction to a master plan revision project for the South State Street corridor plan. And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be doing that, because that's the exact discussion we're having right now. As it sounds to me, as somebody who's been involved in multiple master plan revisions, I think it's something that could be handled at the staff level. I know we can't do our full master plan revision like we'd all like to because of budget reasons, particularly because of COVID. But certainly we could tackle this project. And I would see it as two parts. One would be the Briarwood area and one would be the rest of the South State Street corridor plan. Both of those need to be addressed and I would like to see us try to address both of them simultaneously, even if the solutions are slightly different. And in terms of achieving the, the ecosystem of a mixed use hub, right, I, I agree that every parcel doesn't need to provide every use. But if we're going to get a multitude of uses, perhaps we could do it with things like premiums where if you're saying 100 feet, well, make it or 80 feet, make it half that, but then use a premium to get that height or density or whatever other desirable feature that developer might want. Use a premium to incentivize that mixed use capability and, or incentivize whatever's lacking. It could take a little creativity to do that, but I, if the market isn't driving it now, let's incentivize the market to drive what we want. And that's part of the planning process. What do we want to see? And then how can we get the market to meet what our plans are, rather than just following along with whatever the market says it wants? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chambers, if you can unmute yourself, you can address the planning commission.
Thank you, Brett. You've seen my comments online, so I, I won't restate them. There's no need to obviously, but I, I was hoping for something a little different. So I'll just, you know, and I sent my comments through email and I was thinking, gosh, do I read them here or not? I, I don't know. There might be a better way to read them contemporaneously. But it builds actually on what Mr. Stolberg was just talking about. And that's the, the idea, and I'll call them villages as opposed to downtowns. But, you know, Ann Arbor even of itself is not a true metropolitan area. If, if we referred to transportation oriented development best practices, we would be in the village level classification. And there would be a center. We have a downtown transfer center for AATA that could be leveraged to a degree. And then, you know, where existing transfer nodes are, or maybe they get moved slightly. But there's an ability to, you know, do some urban design here that really improves our carbon footprint, minimizing it. Livability, walkability, access to central services. I, I know we've got the market dynamic, which was also referred to in earlier discussions. But do we need the master plan process to create a vision? I don't know. This seems too incremental. And incrementalism to me is muddling through. I would prefer we take the exercise, at least for a short period of time, to come up with what is a, a joint optimization between transit housing and commercial across Ann Arbor. Do we want a radial hub and spoke system, you know, to the downtown center? So those nodes are all feeding into it. Right now, if we just build out capacity around the transit corridors, where do we think people are going? The bus lines exist and I'm, I'm not here to criticize our, our, our bus system. But I, I think we can foster a more sustainable bus system through how we foster housing and, and commercial development in an intelligent basis and not make it piecemeal and incremental. So that, when I made the comment that I, I really think this needs a restart, you know, if I pull up the map of
Thirty more seconds.
Thirty more seconds. Of all of the transport nodes, you know, where those may occur, you know, there's some natural areas that could be built up. And that, that's what I'd encourage you to look at. I don't understand the focus on State Street and Eisenhower. Is, is it in a crisis state or not? Maybe could be, everything could be in a crisis now. But please go back and reconsider. Do some urban design level work here, please. And, and, you know, help us create a vision that we can all rally behind. And maybe work on those market incentives Mr. Stolberg was referring to. So thank you very much. And I, I am hopeful of this process. And I do see more housing is, is important. And I would encourage you to come back with an emphasis on housing in transit and jointly optimizing those for walkability and neighborhood access.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Before we wrap up, I see no more hands. I want to thank all of the members of the community who have called in tonight and provided really thoughtful feedback in multiple formats. Your written comments have been great. Thank you for speaking. Really, I really appreciate the engagement as we're thinking about what the rules of the road ought to be, not just responding to existing development proposals. It's really great to see you out now. And I, I, thank you. I also want to thank the other commission members. Normally our work sessions, we try to keep this one, since we meet pretty much every Tuesday of the month, we try to keep this one shorter. And so thanks for hanging in there. But I, I, I'm sure you'll agree that hearing, getting lots of comments on this is really helpful now at the, you know? So that when we move forward, we've, we have a great sense of kind of what the feedback is. We will be talking about both of these things in the future. I don't know if there's any additional on that. We made, I made the plug before that both will be, the next time we'll see both of them are on the, at the ORC meeting. That's a subset for those who are not regulars to planning commission. That's a subset of planning commissioners who need to try to give staff feedback before they bring ordinances to the full commission. So again, two weeks from today, in Zoom, you can find the link on the city's website. Is there anything else to add, Mr. Leonard?
Nope, just, I, I would echo, thanks for everybody. We will be populating those websites over the coming days, responding to any of the questions that we could get. There's some other resources that were referenced in both topics that we will endeavor to get up there quickly. Just a, a general plug, in addition to the project websites and upcoming planning commission meetings. The city has a great gov delivery service. So if you haven't checked out, you can subscribe to updates from the city. All planning commission agendas of any type are published to what's called the planning updates of gov delivery. So if you are interested in tracking these or any petition, that's a great resource to keep apprised of what is coming up. But that's all.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter, too, for joining us tonight. Thanks. All right. With that, I will move us to item number six, which is adjournment. See you all next week.
Thank you.